We'll start the meeting with the pledge of the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everybody here and on Facebook to our April 15th, 2021 village board meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the village board meeting minutes from April 1, 2021?
Moved.
Megan and Ruth, any questions, changes? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
I'll abstain.
Okay. Citizens comments, we have Carl Pelcher here to discuss an item that's in front of the planning board. And I think if you may have been able to print out, he sent some notes to go with it. It might help follow what he's talking about. So Carl, you're up.
Okay, thanks. Carl Pelcher, you probably don't need the notes. I'm really not going to talk too much. I think the notes are pretty clear. You guys are busy and I don't want to waste your time. But I live at 16 Elizabeth Street. I've lived here for 30 years. I lived around the corner for another 35 years. I do have some experience in planning. I know some of you know that, some of you may not. I started my planning with the village probably in 2003. I was on a committee with EDR and we ended up writing the EDR strategic development plan. I did it because I was very interested in the future of Basel. I thought there were some guidance that needed to be done. 2000, I wrote this down because my memory is terrible. 2007, 2008, I was on the planning board. And then from 2009 to 2019, I was the chairman of the planning board during many. I'm not going to talk about, I think the letter was pretty clear. I feel that. You know, I know you can't really say much about it yet because the planning board hasn't come up with a recommendation. I'm very concerned about a garage accessory building being changed to a B2 primary building. And there's a lot of reasons why I'm concerned about it, but I thought the easiest one to handle was the setbacks. A building is supposed to have a 40-foot setback. A garage accessory building can have a five-foot. If you change this to a building, you now have a retail building which could house a store, a bar, or a restaurant, a doctor's office, right on the neighbor's property line. But I kind of got that all in, I guess. And I mean no malice to anyone. I can't imagine trying to run a village or running the planning board with this COVID going on. And I think the village has had a big loss at this time for an engineer. I'm sure you're trying feverishly to get an engineer, but when a site plan like this comes up, what a help it is to have an engineer. I know that for a fact. I went through four of them and every one of them helped so much. But I do have some procedural concerns that I think I should pass along, maybe before the next meeting, that I think the board would be interested in. Again, no malice. Nobody's done this on purpose. But there's been no agenda posted, no minutes posted. I didn't even know this project was going on until a neighbor called me. I was in Florida. I know you don't feel bad for me. A neighbor called me, screaming at me, Carl, we gotta do something. They're trying to put, they're trying to put a store right on the property line. And I said, you know, I told the neighbor, don't worry. They can't just do that. You know, we'll go talk to them at the meeting. But the meeting, first of all, I tried to find the minutes of the previous meeting. There were no minutes posted. There was no agenda posted. Mary did tell me though, basically what was going on. And she did give me the Zoom link to get on. And I thank Mary for that. She's always been great for me. But none of the property owners were told about this. Now, I know from like 1999 to when I left in 2019, and I wasn't on the board in 1999, it was always a courtesy that you let the neighbors know. And it was always a courtesy. You give them a little time to speak. We always did it in the beginning. We didn't have to. But I tell you, it usually smooths things out. If you don't do that, the neighbors don't feel part of the process and they don't feel like they're getting a fair shake. So we didn't really get a chance to talk the last one until about maybe, I don't know, 15, 20 minutes in. I think it was Greg who said that somebody could talk. I can't remember which neighbor it was. And it kind of opened the floodgates for like two or three minutes, but it really wasn't done very well. Again, I'm not trying to blame anybody. I'm saying I would have done a better job, but it wasn't done very well. Pardon? But now some other details though. The site plan, on the site plan, you're required to put down the adjoining neighbors. That wasn't done on the site plan. I didn't see any measurements that showed the distance from the property line. If you look at the drawing, it looks, almost looks like part of the building is in front of the property line. Part of it's on the property line. Part of it's over the property line. But it sure didn't look like a surveyor did it. And I believe, well, in the site plan, you're supposed to have the surveyor survey the property. That wasn't done. There's no engineer, I guess, but I don't know if any of you really looked at the building. I am not an engineer, but I think it's quite possible that that building could even be condemned. I mean, I walked there again today and there's, there's bows in the structure, pretty good. There's 10-foot cracks where the structure is bowing in. I'm talking about the concrete foundation. You can see that the girders that hold up the roof, they're not even attached to most of the concrete pillars. And I say concrete, they're cinder block pillars. We're just sitting on there by weight. Some are connected, many are not. Roof is no good. I'm not saying I'm not an engineer, but an engineer should look at it. There's another part in our code that says if a building is, has to be 50% destroyed to build it up and it's non-conforming, it can't be done. That's kind of, that would be something for Bob to look at. I don't think that our code book did as good a job as some. There could be some gray area in there. But you should have an engineer look at it. We should be ready to go with this. There was some talk at the last meeting. It sounded like they're ready to approve the project despite the fact survey wasn't done, despite the fact the adjoining neighbors weren't there. And if you, I don't gladly walk with anybody. I'll put a mask if I had my shots. That building's pretty shaky to begin with. So I just want to let that, I wanted you to let that ability be aware of that too. When there's no minutes, I don't know if this has been sent to Circusina Doggett County Planning Association. I don't know if they intend to send it to the Circusina Doggett County Planning Association. I know you have that right to do it later if you'd like, but it certainly should be. Because there's, there is, I don't think it's gray area. And I'm sure our lawyer and Greg doesn't seem to think it's a gray area, but we're in pretty big disagreement over on the setback rules. So, you know, it'd probably be good to have SAPCA look at it. That's what they're there for. I don't know if the seeker was done. My guess is, I don't know much about the project. That probably it's, it would just be a short form seeker. I don't know if it was done. I think there is probably, there might be a chance of contaminated materials on that site. I'm not saying there is, but I think all of you have been around as long, or most of you have been around as long, or almost as long as I have. It was a pretty messy factory at one time. So none of this was really covered. And so I just wanted to bring your attention to that. I think the planning board's come a long way since 1099. I wasn't on it then. But if you recall, there were some controversies ironically with that site. When the machine works or ghoul pumps shut down and developer wanted to put a strip mall in. It was, it was pretty controversial. Split up the village quite a bit. It's a moot point who was right, if it should have been put in or not. It's in, there it is. But I think the village learned from that. In 2003, we decided, you know what? These poor planning boards, I wasn't on the planning board then. They weren't a planning board. They were a reaction board, meaning that they didn't have a vision, not their fault. The village didn't have a vision. So they weren't planning. They were just getting these things plopped in their lap and they had to shoot from the hip. And that's what they did. The village got, I think, smart, forward-thinking, and they hired EDR to come in. What can we do to have a village and have a plan where everything kind of connects a little bit? And I think EDR did a great job. They got us all together. And when I say us, I mean business, residents, and I'm going to say politicians. I don't really consider you guys politicians. I consider you guys volunteers to help our village better. So sometimes, sometimes politician is a negative connotation. But they got together, I think it took about three years, and all the stakeholders kind of put together things. And it, and it took a while to whittle it all down, but it was done and it came up with that plan. And I think it was an excellent plan. I think everybody did. I didn't hear one person say it was a stupid plan. Now, I did hear people say, it's a waste of money. We'll never follow this plan. But I heard no one bad mouth the plan itself. And I think we've been pretty good with following the plan. I know Greg and Mary put the plan up on the website, which I think is great because these things often get put on the shelf and they collect dust. I would think that every new official, be it a, you know, village board member or a planning board member or a zoning member, should really read it. It only takes about eight to 10 minutes. And I think it might even invigorate. Some people say, oh yeah, you know, we have some potential here. And we've unlocked a lot of potential, but we can only keep doing that if we try to follow the plan, enforce the code. Things like these non-conforming buildings, you can't force them out. But you shouldn't encourage them to stay either. And by doing something like this, we're doing exactly what we don't want in that district. We want to build buildings up to the street. We want parking in the back. All right? It's pretty much that simple for that district. There's plenty of open land up front. It would be great if they closed off the one curb cut and put the building up there. Now, I'm sure it's cheaper to do what he's doing. I understand that. And it's his money. It's not my money. But that's what I think we should be working for. And I've probably talked too much already, but, but that's really, you know, what I wanted to say. As far as the other stuff, the code, the substantive code, I call it. This was procedural code, substantive stuff. I'll bring that up where I should at the planning board meeting. I've gotten on the agenda. I don't want to waste your time. Now, for some reason, they recommend it. It comes to you. I may hit you guys up again. But I want to thank you for letting me speak.
Thanks, Carl. And we certainly will listen to what you had to say. There's some things there. I think that we can certainly procedurally, that we need to be a little bit better with. And we'll, you know, discussion with our attorneys and stuff and listen to some of the stuff you said. And we'll, and we'll certainly take it all into consideration. Appreciate all the time and energy that you've put into the village from the planning side of things. And, you know, we don't discount your opinion, that's for sure.
Okay, thanks. And I appreciate the lawyers' help, help us write that code. I think that's important to know. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Carl. Okay. Next on the agenda is that always fun annual appointment list that we have turned into a much easier format. So do you either have them in front of you or do you have it on a computer screen where you can read? Page one is appointments. I would ask you to read through that page quick and see if you have any questions. And then I'd like a motion to approve those appointments. So we'll check and make sure we don't have somebody that's no longer serving. If we have you doing something that you weren't expecting to be doing. Everybody have a chance to read through? Can I get a motion to approve the appointments on page one of the annual appointment list? Mike Shepard?
Second.
Second from Bruce. Any discussion, questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Go over to the second sheet. And these are little, these are the attorneys and electrical inspectors and that type of stuff. If you read down through page two, see if there's any questions on those appointments.
Eric, did you ever speak to get confirmation from Nicole? Because that's the first line on page two.
I did not. I was kind of assuming by not hearing from her, it wasn't a no. But let's, we can proceed with it. And if there's a problem, we'll have to just make a change to the appointments. I've not heard that she's not coming, going to come back. So she's very involved with this current planning board situation. So anybody else have any questions on that page? Can I get a motion to approve page two of the annual appointment lists? Ruth Seiko and Megan? Any other questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Now we're on page three, which includes some dates and hours and that type of stuff. Give that a quick perusal. Throw out those big words because I know I got a big one coming on the next page that I have to read. If I'm not mistaken. That's where Megan usually has to elbow me, make sure I get through it smoothly. Everybody had a chance to look at page three? Can I get a motion to accept the contents of page three? Shepard, Mike Shepard, a second. Ruth Seiko, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. We move on to page four. I have to read, I have to read part of this, right, Mo? I have to read the bold faced. All right, this page includes certificate of appliance, compliance and disclosure, the procurement policy. And I will read the following. At that point, I hope somebody will make a motion. Whereas the Board of Trustees has determined to authorize payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freight and express charges, and whereas all such claims shall be presented at the next regular meeting for audit. And whereas the claimant and officer incurring or approving the claim are jointly and severally liable for any amount the Board of Trustees disallows. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes payment in advance of audit of claims for public utility services, postage, freight and express charges. All such claims must be presented to the next regular meeting for audit. And the claimant and officer incurring or approving the claims are jointly and severely liable for any amount the Board of Trustees disallows. This resolution still take effect immediately. I get a motion to accept these items. Megan, second. From Andy, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Mo, you're, you're a genius because this used to take us like an hour. Now it took us four minutes. You're my hero. All right, we'll move on to trustees' comments. We'll start with trustee Shepard.
Okay.
Don't let it win, Mike.
Sorry, I had you unmuted. My dogs don't stop barking. You would hear them off through the meeting. Just a quick shout out to our DPW. I had an opportunity to take the granddaughter over to McCary Park this week, and I was very pleased with how clean the park equipment was. It was a wonderful time and I appreciate the hard work of keeping the parks looking great this early in the season.
Thank you.
Other than that, I will stick with the agenda.
Always great to hear. Thanks, Michael. Mark Wilder?
Well, it's my turn to thank the DPW for something. So maybe everybody will do this. Chuck and I had the opportunity to meet at the Little League Park, Reeves Park over on Downer Street. And there were a list of some items that we needed to take care of, and I'm happy to report they're already taken care of. So Chuck and his crew went over there very quickly and moved on those items. And if he wants to embellish on that at all during his comments, I'll let him do that. But I just wanted to thank the guys and also acknowledge all the sidewalk work. I think it looks great. And it's a lot of work and we're moving through it very quickly. So thanks to the DPW. And that's it for me.
Thank you.
Chuck, try not to get a big head now. All this stuff, jeez.
Meeting's not over yet.
Yeah, right. Ruth Seiko?
I just, the agenda, thank you.
Chuck's waiting.
Oh, okay. All right. They always do a great job. And actually, the brush pickup and everything's spot on. So it's been great.
There you go.
And they're doing a good job.
Andy Dryden?
It's going to get harder as we go through this, you know, to find things to say, I think.
I can't say enough good about the DPW. So for years and years and years, they've always done a fantastic job. I'm glad to see the sidewalks at the end of the village going up 48 and heading south. That was a real mud pit last few years down by the creek there. So see the concrete going in there, nice, clean, professional thing. Great job, please. That's all I got. Thanks.
Very good. Thanks, Andy. Next up, Megan.
I'm just the agenda, other than thank you to all of the village employees who always do a fabulous job.
Guys are fun to play with. All right, here we go. Bruce is up. What do you got, Bruce?
Nothing new. I took advantage of the weather, been out cycling, so I got to observe a lot of the sidewalks underway. In fact, and I had an appointment at chiropractors and drove through the middle of the, what was going on on East Genesee Street before one of Mike's officers arrived to try and control things a little bit. But it was a, I'm impressed. You know, I think the end product of these sidewalks is really impressive. Putting a nice finishing touch on neighborhoods.
Yep. Very good. Thanks, Bruce. So I got, I do have a couple of things. We are word of mouth, particularly advertising for summer help. Chuck will need two, maybe three summer help people. We're not restricting it to just out of high school, college aides kids. If there's somebody who's been out of work and wants to come and help us mow lawns, if you have a driver's license and clean record, we'd be happy to have you. So Village Hall has the applications. You can check with Chuck up at the DPW if you have questions about the job. I will say one thing. We're really not looking for somebody who's got about four vacations planned for the summer and only be around to work about three weeks. That, that, that's not, we need somebody who wants to work because we do have a lot of work. And we're also looking, as far as I know, we're still looking for somebody to take care of flowers, right?
Yes, I have a call in to the girl that we had last year and I have not heard back from her yet. So.
So if anybody's interested in, the majority of the summer help job is mowing parks and that type of thing. But there is other things too. They keep you pretty busy and it's a nice job. You're out in the sunshine all day and, and making our village look nice. Hats off to the people who put on the chowder cook-off. I just heard nothing but great reviews. I got a message from Jeff Rogers from Angry Garlic. He said the whole thing exceeded his expectations. I heard the chowder was terrific. I heard the New Mexican restaurant won the contest and Angry Garlic was second. So we have, we have a little competition going now. Angry Garlic is usually the one winning all these competitions. And now we got somebody pushing them a little bit, making it kind of fun. So they're, they're excited because, you know, it helps their business. Two or three of the business owners that I had sent out questions to, I was very impressed with their comments. We were happy to see people in the village having fun. Didn't say at our business, you know, or we sold more stuff that day because of it, but just to have people in the village walking the streets, having fun, because they know when people do that, they'll come back. And as a tip to the DPW, the village always looks so good. You know, our streets are clean. You know, we end up with the flowers up and everything looks nice. And why wouldn't you want to come back? I mentioned in the work session, but Van Buren's pool will be closed this summer. Some of the restrictions just made it impossible for them to get, make any plans. And they've lost all the lifeguards who've gone to other pools. So, you know, some of it is restrictions on numbers of people that can be in a pool at a time, restroom cleaning, that type of stuff that just made it very, very difficult. I know that Supervisor Sykes and their engineer Jason Hoy met with Ken Bush, who's county legislator for that side of the, of the river, the Van Buren side of the village and out into Van Buren, along with Assemblyman Magnarelli, met with Matt Driscoll of the Throughway Authority and had a discussion about the Canton Street Bridge that goes down over the throughway and into Warner's. According to what Driscoll told them, the state has 137 bridges in as bad a shape as that bridge. Or maybe that's one of the 137, but there's a lot of bridges that are in very bad shape. It would cost them under $2 million to tear it down. It would cost them about $9 million to rebuild it. It's got to be an extra three feet taller to match bridge code. And they tried to make it impressive upon Driscoll that people in the area really want that bridge to, to exist. So they didn't have any feel one way or the other, whether they had made any headway. But we passed a resolution a few meetings ago. I forwarded that on to Driscoll. Lot of support to keep the bridge, which might mean absolutely nothing. So our courts reopened today, or yesterday. Hope that went well. I haven't heard from anybody that there were any problems. Watched a webinar today on the new cannabis legislation and how it may affect cities and villages. It's complicated. It's why we have an attorney to uncomplicate it for us. There's a lot to think about. And I want all, I would like all of you on the board to get yourself up to speed as much as possible on the legislation. If I see good stories, I'll forward them on to you. At some point, we're going to have to make a decision whether we think that's, that we want to have commercial cannabis facilities in the village or we don't. And then if we don't, then people can petition and override our veto. So it is a lot to think about. There is some money involved, but there's a lot of other things to be concerned about. And I would ask you all to do, to do due diligence and know, you know, as much as you can about this. So when we have to make a decision, you know, we're all on board and understanding what's going on.
Eric, can I, can I piggyback off of your comments there?
Yes, sir.
Chuck and I had a conversation this afternoon. I believe you did as well. But just so the rest of the board is aware, as it relates to police and the DPW workers, the legalization of the marijuana, Chuck's guys are a little bit unique in that they all have, as a condition of their employment, they have to have a CDL, Commercial Driver's License. And that is regulated by the federal government. And the federal government still classifies marijuana as a Schedule I narcotic. So for Chuck's guys that are subject to random drug screening because of their CDL, they can't use marijuana, nor can they really be around people that do. Because if they end up getting, go to a party, let's say on a Saturday where they're around people that are using it, Because if they end up getting, go to a party, let's say on a Saturday where they're around people that are using it. And they inhale it, and then on Monday or Tuesday, they get picked to do a random drug test, that just happens to be when that falls. And it comes back positive, should they lose their CDL. It's a term of condition of their employment, I would assume that their job would 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 go with it. So Chuck and I had that conversation and that, you know, reinforcement will be. It's really incumbent upon the individuals to know what this, what the rules and regs are about their CDL status. But I think it's incumbent upon us as a good employer just to ensure that they're all aware of that. And then on the police side of the house, because of the federal law. That that schedules, that labels it as a Schedule One narcotic. Under federal law, police officers can't can't utilize that. So our departmental, longstanding departmental policy remains in place. That's been communicated with our staff since, since the day the law went into effect. So that's how it's gonna impact our two organizations, which are the largest portion of the workforce for the village. So I don't know if anyone has any further questions on that, but Mayor, you were on the same thing I was on. And I was asking a few questions in the chat, some of which got answered and some of which didn't, so.
Yeah, it sounds like, I mean, Nightcom's on top of things, but still they have questions. There's, it's, some of it's clear as mud, I mean, some of it's pretty direct and straightforward, and there's other things that. You know, aren't quite as clear cut. And we'll we'll have, you know, probably what I would consider a fairly big decision to make. You know, some people are gonna look at this and say, just don't believe in it, you know, not right. Don't care if we're gonna make money off it or not, other people are gonna say. It should have been legal a long time ago, and about time we caught up. So you all have your opinions, but I would like you to do whatever you do to be thinking about what's, you know, best for the village. You know, we'll be, we'll be getting down to nitty gritty before too long.
I I just would point out too, that unfortunately I was out of town, so I couldn't attend the Nightcom. But there is a three hour seminar that I'm gonna be attending coming up, so I will get something out to the board on that.
Okay, thanks, Bob.
And Mayor, I did appreciate Mike's phone call today, and just to let the board know. We have had the conversations at the DPW about this and. As far as we know right now, nothing's changed for us, we couldn't do it before, and we don't believe we can now for the CDL drivers.
And that's, that's what this discussion today was saying. You know, obviously if you lose your CDL license, you're not much help to the DPW anymore. If you expect them to be driving big trucks and stuff. So it's certainly something for them to be aware of and.
It's, the good news is nothing new, it's, we should, our regulations are the same. Because it's federal and they couldn't do it before, and apparently we can't do it now, so.
But, you know, we're in the interest of just making sure there's no confusion on anyone's part, because. That's, that was the concern Chuck and I had a good conversation this afternoon, so. We just want to ensure that there's no confusion by anybody that even though the states changed the rules and regs, it still can't be done.
Very good, thank you, Mike and Chuck for the input. And I would say that, Mike, you see a lot of that kind of stuff come across. Your desk or, you know, online, if you see any stuff that's got good information, forward it to me and I can share it with the board. You know, you might see things, individual things broken down, that would help people understand better. And Bob, anything you see that, you know, we can share with the board to help them make better decisions as we go along, I would appreciate that.
I'll get that out.
Did get notification from Nightcom about the current status of the budget, state budget. It appears that they're ready to. Go with the budget. That will include a hundred million dollars more in the chip, the chips pot that has been in there for at least the last eight years. How much that might mean to us, might mean another ten thousand, which would be, you know. Two thirds of a small street or whatever, you know, everything we can get extra to help, we can get more streets done. And try to be proactive and and not wait till streets fall apart before we fix them up. Also, the Pave New York Fund, which we we get. That part of that hundred and twenty thousand that we get, that we call Chips Money, includes some Pave New York money. And there's also the Extreme Winner Recovery Act. Which is meant to offset the cost of salt and overtime and the wear and tear on big vehicles. That has been increased, so that hopefully we will see, you know, a five to ten percent increase on what we get. Every year, which will be nice, because there'll be that much more we can do. And there's an additional five hundred million dollars going into the water sewer fund. Which some of our local legislators and and Nightcom have been working hard with the state to say. Let's take that water sewer money and make it just like chips. So that Baldwinsville would be entitled to X thousands of dollars every year as our water. Sewer money. So we would know we had money coming to do repairs. That we, we don't have to budget extra money and we can, the nice thing with what's going on now with our water. Is is with Chuck's leadership, we're staying ahead of things. We're trying to get to things that could be a problem before they become a problem. And that's a good way to save money. And so if we were able to get a chips type of thing for water and sewer, that would be terrific. Not sure I want to tell you all to hold your breath till we hear that, but. Did get a, a nice letter, Mark Jenkins, who's on the zoning board. Greg, right? He had written me a letter. A week and a half ago, he lives in Aspen Springs. Saying that they would like to be considered for sidewalks coming up East Genesee Street. Particularly on the south side. We already had in the plans to do the north side, Point Park back down to the first intersection. So that got done, and he sent me a nice email thanking me for getting that done. I don't, I can't take any credit, it was on the agenda last year, it just didn't get done because of COVID. But now he's wondering if they could, if we can designate that area for a crosswalk. And so, and I told him that that's, the state makes those decisions, that's, that might be a pretty tough spot. People are coming over that hill, they're supposed to be thirty by the time they hit the village line, but. I'd be a little nervous sticking my nose out there to walk across the street with traffic coming from both directions and people are picking up speed. People are trying to lose speed coming in. But we can ask. And I also told him that it's on my agenda to try to get the other side of the street done between Curtis Ave and Festa Fairway. To finish that off, so, so we've, we've made them. Sort of happy, and maybe someday soon we can make them happier. But I appreciated his letter because it was written in a way that, you know, it wasn't slamming us or anything, it was just. You know, whatever you could do, we appreciate, so now they appreciate that that one side of the street is done.
Just to correct, he's on the planning board.
Planning board, I'm sorry. Okay, I knew he was on one of the boards. And I also will have to have a brief executive session. Item E for personnel discussion. It should not take long.
Hey, Clarky, have you heard anything about, you you mentioned the the pool, you heard anything about the spray park in Lysander?
I have not, I I know that, I've just heard that they were talking about it, but I've not heard if they've made a decision or not. It's so hard because, you know, I, I get Isabel Harris, who's Ryan McMahon's liaison to us. And I ask her, what do you think? Can you ask, you know, because I, I don't know who in that circle of people are the right people to talk to. And she just sends me the. Open New York or New York Forward or whatever it is, you know, like. The same thing Ruth was talking about, she sends me. The four sheets with all, for different levels, and it's really a lot of reading. And it's hard to figure out which category of things you're really looking at and of the thing that you're trying to find out about. And I end up with no more answer than I had before. I hate to be too conservative, but this is not something I want to be crazy and just start opening things up and suddenly, you know. We're having a finger pointed at us because people got sick and maybe we were part of the reason. So I'm going to make, try to make a phone call tomorrow and try to talk to somebody. From the county, I may call a couple of mayors, somebody mentioned the parks in Marcellus. The restrooms are open, so maybe I'll call and ask them what protocol they're using. Did somebody send them something, and if so, could you forward it to me so that, that we have something in hand if anybody questions us? I'm not, it's not that I'm afraid to make a decision, but this is a little different on whether you say. We're gonna have the street go this way or that way, this is about health stuff that I want to make sure we get it right, but. But that gets back to, I still don't know what they're doing with the spray park. I'm guessing they'll have to come up with something pretty soon, because they're gonna have to have somebody run it and be over there, you know, in charge of it and. Alright, so that's all I have. Department heads, we'll start with our attorney, Bob.
Um, just one comment, and that is that I just thought the board know, I, I did send out to the supervisors of. Van Buren and Lysander the proposed Canton Woods Agreement for twenty twenty-one. It was, it's been a while, I haven't heard back, I'm gonna follow up on that, just to let you know that that's still moving along. So hopefully I'll hear back from them, but other than that, I'll just stick with the agenda.
Okay, very good, thanks, Bob. Code Officer Greg.
Unmuted as usual. Just, I guess I just want to remind people in the village that the village does not pick up any type of furniture from the edge of the roadway. And neither does your normal trash hauler pick that up. You need to make arrangements with your trash hauler for a special pickup. Or remove those items from the curb yourself or from the property yourself, they can be taken to. One of the Okra transfer stations like Lake Creek over off of First Seventh North Street. And that's been one of the biggest complaints so far this spring is the furniture bedding, different things put out at the curb that aren't being picked up.
Very good.
Other than that, I can stay with the agenda.
Okay, thanks, Greg. Village clerk, Mo. Anybody else hear her? We can't hear him. Doesn't say muted, but.
Barely that much. Yeah, no.
Send Megan a message, she'll read it. Move on to treasurer, Anna.
Um, I really don't unless someone has questions, I am working away on closing the year and hopefully you'll see some figures very soon.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Anna, how you been? Senior center, Ruth.
Uh, just a couple of things, today we did have a craft supply giveaway and that went really well. Folks were happy to take away things to go home and work on that we had surplus of from donations over the past year. Want to remind the seniors that we are working on reopening small group limited programming, but we are working on it and hope to. Have something available to you in the near future. In the meantime, we are gonna be utilizing the grounds, which we're so fortunate to have, to do some outdoor programming. Some of the things that have been going on Zoom will be outside, weather permitting, the art group and the book club. And our falls prevention program is starting on Tuesday at ten AM outside with Julie, our physical therapist. You do need to call to make a reservation because there's a limited space for that. So we're, we're working on those outdoor things and hoping to get indoor programming. Also, the first concert of the season is set for May thirteenth, it'll be George Lea at two PM outside near the gazebo. So join us for that. And I do want to thank the DPW as well. Because they have done a tremendous amount of work for us during the time of we're closed, and just this week. Jeff Bordwell was repairing the handicap access door, so many, many things that that help us all the time. And I also want to thank the mayor and this board for their support of the senior center during the pandemic. And especially during this phase where we're trying to transition back inside, so thank you all for your support, and that's it.
Thanks, Ruth. Public Works, Chuck.
I'm all set, everybody already talked about us. Actually, it has been very busy. Between, you know, brush starting, the sidewalk projects, doing well, repair that we get done. Trying to get the parks opened up. Mark had spoke earlier about the Little League field. I was able to get a couple of guys over there, Jeff, Jeff Borwell and Mark Zach do a lot of our odds and ends and parks, things like that, and they get over there and got those taken care of quickly. People are shifting around a lot just from highway to water, the water's been out on Downer and Tapping Street. Trying to straighten up some of those valves and what have you, that they've got hit through the winter, so they can be done by black topping. But things are moving along great, I need to apologize to the attorney, I think I've missed two days without calling him, so. Bob, Bob's been great with a lot of questions we have. Anna's been good, I've tried to hide from her, but Anna's been good too, so other than that, we're moving along unless we have any questions.
Are you gonna be redidding?
Yes, yeah, we're working on that and and we also need to work on that piggyback thing for the black topping too. Yeah, yeah, I'm waiting to get the, or the process back in and we're gonna rebid that. The Canton Street project.
Oh, and I did check with Albany on the Sam Grant. We had been awarded a hundred thousand dollars for some work on Canton Street Water. But then with the COVID, they weren't sending any money out because they didn't know if they were gonna be broke or whatever. And they're still not sure because they don't, they haven't gotten their money from the feds, and so. Unfortunately, the kind of grant that that is, is you, you can't do anything with it. You can't do any of the work until you have at least them tell you you do have the money available. And we haven't heard that, so we may have to go ahead on the electrical project, out that grant and. Just forfeit, you know, it's a, it's called a dormitory grant, but. It's, it's happened to us before, but this is obviously an unusual situation. I can find out who to talk to specifically, because I sent an email to one person because they had replied to Chuck. And I got an email back from a different person responding that I'm in charge. And so I may just try to make a phone call and say, you know, because of the COVID, you know, you put us in a tough spot. And now, this is a very important project, and. Is there a chance that you can waive that particular clause and say, go ahead and start your project because we, we have awarded it to you? We just haven't taken the steps that they need to take, so we'll see, I'm not, I'm not very optimistic. About their plans, but. Anything else, Chuck?
Nope, we're good.
Okay, we'll move on to the police department, Chief Lefenchek.
Thank you, Mayor. I was recently contacted by Perma, our workers' comp carrier. And the police department is going to be the sole statewide recipient of their premier award this year. And they've indicated that they're presenting that to us. Because of the low number of injury claims that the police department's had over the past five years. We've taken advantage of some of the Perma grants that have been out there. One is, we took advantage of the grant to purchase outer ballistic vest carriers for all of our staff. That some of the equipment like radios and pepper spray and things can be moved up onto those vests to help prevent back injuries. We've also purchased a number of personal protective equipment, PPE as it were, through Perma at greatly reduced costs. Some of which have gone down to the senior center, like some masks and gloves and things, and same thing over the village hall. Same thing over in the Village Hall. Uh, we've, uh, obviously, uh, uh, working with our Lexible Policy Manual. And procedures and, uh, and that's helped as well as, uh. Perma offers some video training and we've had members of our staff, uh, also, uh. Do, uh, uh, some of the Perma video training to help, uh, prevent injuries. And then, uh, we're developing an officer wellness program as well. So all those things combined, uh, they've indicated that we're gonna be the recipient of, of that award, which we're. Very pleased about. And they're actually on, on Tuesday, sending out a film crew from, uh, from Albany to, uh. To do some filming of, uh, of our staff and, and, and some things to, uh, they have an annual Perma conference and I believe this. This is gonna get shown, uh, during their annual conference. So I think it's gonna be a nice, uh, nice benefit for us and, uh. Something nice, uh, that, uh, we're being recognized for. And then, uh, uh, last week, uh, we had, uh, I know I put a press release out and some people, some of the. Board members, I know I've been in communication, uh. Saw this, but, uh, we had, uh, call while shortly after midnight, uh, uh, and off individuals up, uh, on top of the bridge. Uh, that spans the, uh, Seneca River. And I mean, on top of the metal girders. It climbed up, uh, on, on top there. And a couple of our staff, uh, had contact with the individual. He had been. You know, he, he was, uh, obviously intoxicated and, uh, this individual's. Was laying down up top there. And if you look at it, those girders are a little wider than what you think they are. But someone, uh, like myself who's not a real fan of heights, uh, I'm probably not going to climb up there to help the person get down, but. This individual ran to the south side, kinda slid down and then jumped and then. Immediately took off and ran out at the Paper Mill Island with. Uh, troopers that were on scene assisting in, in hot pursuit as it were to try and. Uh, get custody of this individual and, and the person ended up jumping into the river. Uh, with the assistance of the sheriff's office and Air One and the state police and the Ball's Fire Department. Uh, Sergeant Gwen and, uh, uh, Officer Halsey were on scene for our department. Uh, Sergeant Gwen called me to let me know what was going on. Fortunately, about, after about twenty minutes, they located the person, still alive, got him out of the, uh. The river and, uh, went up to the hospital and, uh, I went in and, uh, was talking with the sergeant and, uh. Uh, Reserve Officer, uh, Trustee Shepherd, who apparently can't sleep at night. Uh, showed up and, uh, to check the status. This was, I don't know what time was that, Mike? One, one thirty or something by that time. And, uh, like, geez, I'm gonna have to sign this guy up with, to, now that I know somebody's up and, uh, available at midnight to call in. Uh, it's good to know, but. Well, so, uh, all of a sudden the car pulls up and, and Jason Gwen's like, who's this? And then Mike pulled up and said, that's, and then he recognized, you know, I'm like, that's the trustee. He goes, took me a second, so, um, but, uh. The officers on scene did a really good job and, uh, the person had no identification, uh. Jason Gwen and I ended up over the microtel because he had a microtel key and. Long story short, the room wasn't registered to this person. Somebody else had bought it. Jason did a good job checking social media and was able to determine who that person was. Turned out that there were some warrants for the person and, uh, and things, but, uh, really appreciate the, the cooperation by all the agencies involved and. We're hoping that, uh, we don't have something like that, uh, occur anytime soon again. Uh, unless there's questions by anyone, that's all I really wanted to report to the board now.
Well, to join in with all the adulation we gave to Chuck, I'm gonna give some to you. Nice job with the, uh, Perma Award. That's great.
Thank you.
And it's always nice to hear that it's involved with safety, that people were being, not getting hurt. You know, that's. When you sit in our seats, that, that's something you worry about all the time. So congratulations to the whole department and particularly to you and, uh. You, you deserve it, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, anything else? Anybody got any questions for the chief?
Not for the chief, but I do have Maureen's comment that she was trying to make earlier. She was trying to let Bob know that the Canton Woods Agreement has been signed by both towns and that they have made the payments to us.
Oh, okay, great.
Unless you were talking about another agreement, but she thought you were talking about.
No, I was talking about the, the twenty twenty-one agreement, not the twenty twenty agreement. So, uh, if they, if that's been signed and sent back in. Um, I'll, I'll just remind her to please give me a copy so that I have it in my files.
She can hear you. Very good. Thanks, Meg. Uh, move on to pending business. Um, web proposal, not heard anything from anybody. Uh, which I, I'm, I'm not one that loves to assume. Because I know what that can do to you, but, um, I have not heard a thing. And so my. My hunch is that they've just decided if we're gonna wait till the end of this budget year, we're gonna wait. And let it go with that. The water rate increase proposal. Bruce, is that something that you're prepared?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the, uh, proposed increase as was submitted to the board. It's a three percent increase for in-village residents and three and a half percent for out-of-village users.
Do we have a second?
You got two of them.
Got a bunch of them.
Any, any questions for Bruce? I, I appreciate the work, Bruce. Like, you know, if we're gonna be handing out praise, you get some for that. That takes a lot of work and.
Size that S per your request. We're only doing this for a single year. It's not the whole table.
Yeah, but still takes work.
And keep in, i- these rates are still less than awkward.
And you got Chuck and the boys to take care of you if something happens. So you're in good hands with.
I actually, I shouldn't waste your time with this. On my bike, last bike ride. It was incredible traffic on Downer Street when a front-end loader came from the west. To make a left-hand turn, uh, to Canton and pretty much the whole world stopped. So we could cross that street on the bike. Then the loader followed us down Canton, down Tapping. Up across at Syracuse Street. Usually it's, uh. Challenging to get into the right lane when you're on Syracuse Oswego Street approaching the light, but having a massive loader behind you.
I don't think it was intentional, but.
No.
It was nice. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, as far as water rate increase proposal. Um, any other questions?
Just a comment from Mo. Um, Bruce, can you send Maureen the proposed rates?
You bet.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Thank you, Bruce. And my wife appreciated her birthday card. It was very nice. You have to always pick on me though, don't you?
Well, you bet.
I move on to new business. Uh, item A, can I get a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the loan documents with Salvate Bank for new police vehicles? As budgeted in the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two village budget.
Moved.
Megan, any questions? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Item B. I get a motion to set a public hearing for Thursday, May sixth, twenty twenty-one. To consider proposed local law amending the village code of the village of Baldonville, chapter three forty-five. Entitled zoning and the related village zoning map to amend section three forty-five dash three A. To adopt the village of Baldonville zoning map dated February eleventh, twenty twenty, as the official zoning map of the village.
Moved.
Mark Wilder?
Second it.
Second from Bruce. Anybody have a question? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Alright, item C. Discussion possible action regarding Paper Mill Island and unaccompanied minors. The village would institute a policy as owner and operator of the island to restrict unaccompanied minors and authorizing the erection of signs on the island to this effect. This is, uh, either Bob or, or Mike. Anybody wanna carry the torch on?
I'll start off. Uh, Bob, Bob can jump in if, if that's okay with Bob.
Sure.
So I reached out to, to, to Bob because, uh, an issue we're having out on Paper Mill Island is, is we've had some graffiti out there. So, uh, we've had officers go out there and, and, and we've, you know, located some, some youths. And as a matter of fact, I checked my. My messages earlier, uh, and, and during the meeting, you noted, one of the officers had a couple of names of some kids that. Might be involved, but we've had some spray painting out on the island and we'd like to, to curb that. And, you know, there's really no purpose for, there's nothing really to do on the island. It's obviously open to the public. And we don't have any lawful authority for police officers to go out there and tell kids who are fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, thirteen, whatever. To vacate the property. There, there's, you know, it's, it's open to the public. So without some sort of signage or action by this board. Indicating that individuals under the age of eighteen have to be accompanied by a parent or guardian unless they're attending. You know, an event like the ninety-three Q event that used to be out there or something like that. Um. Um, if that kind of signage was in place, that then at least gives us something to point to to say. Um, alright, you gotta leave the island. There's no reason for you to be here. Um, it's unlike, you know, Mercer Park where there's a basketball court. Or you go over to McCary Park where there's a ball field. People play football over there if they wanted or whatever. And swing sets, there's really nothing to do out on the island. There's just the amphitheater and that's it. So I reached out to Bob about that and Bob indicated, uh, we should put this on the agenda. And Bob, from a legal perspective, I don't know if you've got anything more to. To, to chime in on with the board.
Well, I would just mention that, uh, the, um, this would be a policy matter because, uh. Paper Mill Island is owned by the village. It's not necessarily a park under the parks and wrecks. Uh, but it's, uh, uh, owned by the village. So this would be a policy as the owner. Uh, as to, uh, the, uh. Occupants or, or as to having unaccompanied minors go. So I, I believe that the village has the authority to do that as owner and, uh. Uh, does not need to adopt legislation to do that, but a resolution would be. Um, if, if you, the board wants to do that, a resolution would be appropriate. So that, uh, the chief could put up the appropriate sign to prohibit, um. Uh, unaccompanied minors from, from being out on the island. And it probably would be a good safety item anyway.
Yeah, cause, cause one of the re- issues I was running into was officers on their own, they weren't directed by Mike Lockwood to write and do this. You know, a couple of them were telling the kids to, you know, move along. And then they were complaining to me saying, well, geez, the kids said that, so they talked to this officer who said they could stay. And I'm like. Well, what legal authority do we have to kick the kids out of there? And, you know, this particular officer was like, well, I don't know. And I said, there you go. I know that's why. You didn't notice the lieutenant or I give you a directive to do that. So I said, let me talk to the village attorney on this and I, and I did reach out to the mayor. Explained it to him, told him I was gonna conference a matter with, but, a matter with Bob. So that's how we've come to tonight.
Alright, um, can I get a, a motion to. Change or institute a new policy as the owner and operator of Paper Mill Island to restrict unaccompanied minors from being on the. Um, island without, um. A corresponding adult accompanying them and for the, the erection of signs stating that that is our policy.
Mayor, could you modify that motion, please? Instead of adult, could you say parent or legal guardian?
Yeah, okay. Instead of adult, parent or legal guardian.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it for discussion. Mike, didn't you mention? Outside of special events, I mean. An event like that ninety-three Q concert, would you still expect them to have a, an, an adult with them?
No, that's why I said, uh, like those types of events, um.
Cover it in the motion. That's what I'm asking, I think.
Right, yeah, I would agree that, 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 uh, that the motion should probably include that language. That's a good point, Bruce.
At the same time, you can also, also, as you're scheduling items on the island, you can always waive that, just like we waive open container loans.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, perfect. That might be a cleaner way of doing it then. That way we can look at those on an individual basis.
Very good. Thanks, Bob. Good idea. Any other discussion or questions?
Just clarification of minors considered eighteen and under or under eighteen?
Under eighteen.
Okay. I don't fit into that category.
A year or two ago, you might have. Alright, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thanks, Mike, for the legwork on that.
I appreciate the Bob's, uh, counsel on it as well and, uh, the board's understanding of the situation.
Okay, we got item D. Can I get a motion to authorize the appointment of Arthur Humboldt as a seasoned laborer in the Parks Department at a rate of seventeen? Dollars an hour with an effective date of April nineteenth, twenty twenty-one?
Moved.
Second.
This, for any of you who know, this is Chip, who's been with us for several years now. We'd be lost without Chip. He's, uh, you know. Not only does he do his work very well, he takes good care of the young people that are working with him. And I think he teaches them the right way to do it, uh, as far as.
Crew leader.
Yep. Alrighty, we got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Um, before we go into executive session, and I just need the board and Bob. For that, um, any, anything else that we need to address, um, before we adjourn? Mark, are you awake? I'm way back. I can't really see you. Alright, um, seeing nobody has any further discussion, can I get a motion to adjourn into executive session personnel? Uh, matter? With no action anticipated.
I'll second that, just to prove I'm awake.
I was just teasing. I knew you were awake. Alright, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carried. Alright, I'll sign us off from live and I'll take us off of recording and we'll just stay on here.